Evening, good evening. It is now six thirty PM, January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. And at this time, I would like to call to order our city council meeting. We start with pledge allegiance and invocation will be given by Fifth Ward Councilmember Karen Benel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for everyone, and thank you to everyone who came out here tonight with, to come to this council meeting. I just want to have everyone reflect, pray, meditate, whatever you'd like to do. Thank you.
We will start by asking y'all to bear with us tonight. As you can see, agenda is up on the screens. We are embarking on a new journey in technology. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you will start us with a roll call, please.
Mayor Daniel Mahoney.
Present.
Vice Mayor Arlene Robinson. Second Ward Councilmember Freddie Dancy.
Each side.
Third Board Councilmember Angelita Gunn.
Present.
Fourth Board Councilmember Laura Dreyer Schlechtie. Fifth Ward Councilmember Karen Benel.
Present.
Sixth Ward Councilmember Will Fordgrave.
Here, albeit a little bit late, sorry about that.
Here nonetheless, you made it before roll call, that's not late. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, for the roll call. Next, we'll be looking for a motion in support for the adoption of the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, addition, deletions to the agenda?
Support.
Seated or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay. So, okay. Sorry, we were trying to make sure that when the votes tally, that you can see visibly who voted for what. So again, just work with us here. Motion carries. That brings us down to the next item on the agenda, presentations and proclamations. And we would now ask for Hotel Hayes update from the Jeffers Group.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, for the opportunity to come and speak with you today during time this evening.
No microphone, is that what you signal?
Yeah, I can't hear him, so if you could either raise the mic or speak into it.
Hello? I don't believe it's on.
I don't believe it's on yet.
How about now?
Test, test, test. I didn't think I had to do that. There we go, wonderful, appreciate that. For the opportunity to be here tonight and to kind of present the work that we've been doing over the last year. So this has been a, obviously a project for your community for much longer than ours, but certainly a fun journey for us to take a look at the building, to reimagine it, and to be able to share what we have in terms of an opportunity. So, the Hayes, for an opportunity to restore an iconic building, I think you know that, that's landmark status, and looking at it from historic rehabilitation as well as adaptive reuse. So, it's lived a long, almost a hundred years to date, and our plan is to make sure that we come up with something that leads us for the next a hundred years with that. So, everyone's familiar with the address to date, but it's a ten-story mixed-use historic rehabilitation. We are looking at market rate apartments for this, along with some tenant amenities. There's retail, and we'll go through a bit of that, as well as office and hospitality space that makes up twenty-five thousand square feet of a hundred and thirteen thousand total square feet of this particular property with that. Jonathan, if we could go to the next screen, that'd be great. So floor plans, really particular property on the left this way, and then we'll see individual floor plans as we go through. But, starting on floor one, we really have what will be the restaurant area, which is really the northeast corner, if you can imagine that, that's closest to the, to the park and I'll call it the amphitheater ban shell area, that's there. Traditional front-end retail on Michigan Ave that are there, two different large spaces that can be either combined as three thousand square feet each or subdivided into potentially three slots on either side. On the second floor, we have what, it's originally not the grand ballroom, because the original grand ballroom was filled in, but the bar area that's found as you get up to the second floor to the, into the left, which would be the west side of it if you go up the main stairs, of bringing that back to its grandeur for events, as well as the adjoining room to that, which has a banquet facility, which we'll talk about a little bit later, and some potential office space and commercial on that second floor. Third floor, which is really truly a commercial piece, and then that is where the last step-in occurs, and then floors four through ten is really where you have the singular facade and drive-up of the building, which will be full residential. So we'll kind of go through each floor here, Jonathan, if you could, and please feel free to ask any questions if you'd like. So, the one on the left is really the current condition, the one on the right imagines bringing back some of the smaller, like, detail items that are part of the building. So, you can see the awnings, the signage, those type of things now becoming a part dealing again and re-establishing that. There's great grand windows on the front of this building historically, would be bringing those back to their glory and removing, you know, kind of the wood that's overcovering and overlaying some of those locations. So this takes a little, first floors we were talking about, in the upper right-hand corner, you can see the right, the restaurant area designated there, both the front and the back of the house. We are aware that this is the drum room there. We have been talking with local restaurant tours for a concept for this and for a space of bringing it back to that, for an opportunity for high-end dining, but also cocktails, and I think, again, giving its proximity to the park and to the shell area there, there's some great opportunities for potential sidewalk cafe seating there as well. You can see the retail spaces that really on the front facing, south exposure of the building off Madison. You'll see it coming off of the street, excuse me, from the east south, will really be the entrance, one to the restaurant, but also for the residential folks to be able to come into that, as well as an entrance from the north side of the building, from the parking lot area in there. On the second floor, you can see if you come up the stairs from the bottom, you would turn to the left again to the ballroom area, as well as see event and catering in the space. We are imagining a holding area there for this, this wouldn't be a full kitchen there, but the ability to hold food and to be able to use it for serving. Our area, we don't have it designated yet as to what that would be, and we are also in discussion to potentially expand the event space use there with that. So we'll continue to work with that with third-party partners that we have planned for operation with inside of the building. On the third floor then, this really is a dedicated office area. Again, we will be working to identify potential tenants for this area, also looking at the possibility of doing sort of a flex office or co-working space as a part of this area here. It's a total of seven thousand three hundred and twenty-two square feet, as you can see, some of the shared common area, so the office space itself is, it's a ten thousand square feet total with inside of that. You'll notice the void in the center or on the center-left side of that drawing, and that is because of the two-story nature of the ballroom area. Really kind of gives us an idea of one of the corner swings and shows the three different unit types that will be in the, really floors four through ten, that is studios, which is represented at the top of the drawing there, you can see, two bedrooms, which are down the right-hand side, and then the one bedroom. Lot of beautiful windows, as you know from the street, that you can see those up, but really some great light and great window exposure in all of the units that we have put together for that. Again, from a market rate standpoint, it's modern kitchens and bathrooms, there'll be some historic detail and character, as there needs to be, as this will be a historic tax credit project. We did already receive the Part One approval from the National Park Service for this property, which is great, that's the first step in a series of many steps with the National Park Service to do that. And then in-unit laundry is a part as well of what we have here. So if we go to the next slide, it'll really show you what a, kind of a full floor plate will look like. As well, the fourth floor, there will be some common area amenity space for the tenants in the building, could potentially be gym space, as well as gathering space, party room, workspace for tenants to be able to be a part of that in the building. This gives you a little bit of a break, that the standard floor plate then is, the fourth floor, there'll be ten units plus the amenity space, and then the fifth floor through the tenth are all twelve units per floor, and it really follows that stack vertically. So, two bedrooms in that eight-hundred-and-twenty square foot, you can see the kind of square-foot range for the one bedrooms, there's a couple different configurations of that, as well as the studio piece for that. The range, just again, gives you some proximity and layout and understanding of kind of how it fits. I don't think this is probably new to anyone here, again, familiar with what it is. In the proximity of the building layout, there's some new construction contemplated with this building. The building currently only has one means of egress with inside of it, so we will need to add a second means of egress, which would mean a second stairwell connected to the north side of the building in the center. So you can kind of see a little bump out on the north end or the top side of the building there. There will be one-story structure on either side that will become the entrance and exit for tenants, as well as back-of-the-house service, trash removal, those things for the property itself. And I think that's it for the presentation piece of it, if you'd like to go back a couple other slides, you can, Jonathan, for that. And really what we're here to do, and is one to show you, we have been working on this, we're past the blocking, we are about less than four weeks away from schematic drawings for this. Tower Pinkster is our architectural partner for this particular project. We are here to request an extension on the purchase-sale agreement. We are looking to close this project on the fifteenth of September of this year. The total construction time, once we begin, will be sixteen months in total from a placed-in-service date for that. There are several other steps that we need to take between now and September, obviously the completion of the plans, moving that through permitting, obviously as well our development agreement and other items that we'll have to work through with you. But, you know, the plans, moving that, gun the process with MEDC and several of the other programs and grant programs that'll be a part of the capital stack and process for this. As you can imagine, this is a complex capital stack in the way that it works. Traditional buildings like this, as you're aware, the regular development is, you know, you come in and you build it for this and it's worth this much. In this case, and a lot of our projects and what we do, you actually build it for this much and then it's worth this. And then you have to use the different instruments and tools to be able to close that gap, to bring things like this back to the table. So, historic tax credits are a part of that. The MEDC has been very proactive in helping guide us and lead us to a piece for that. So I can tell you that the desire to make this a reality extends well past Jackson, definitely has the support from a state level for that. And so we appreciate your time, we appreciate your consideration to extend this opportunity for us to acquire it. We are very excited to have this opportunity, and I realize I may have skipped in the beginning exactly who we are, because we've had some other conversations with that, but my name is Brian Lawson, I'm with the J. Jefferson Company, I apologize for not stating that earlier. But this product really is in our wheelhouse. We are a historic adaptive reuse company. We root for, believe that real estate is really the connection to actually bigger social and economic change in communities. A rare one for us. Typically, this building would be the first thing done in a community, and it would be the catalyst for all the other change that takes place. But one of the things that attracted us to us when the anchor initiative invited us out here was all the work that's already done in the city has already taken place. Michigan Avenue and just the thoroughfare and how that's been put together, the vibrancy and the life that you can see in all the retail along the main corridors, the murals throughout the city that are there, the overall cleanliness of the city, a life that typically we see after we do the first project. So, we're delighted by us to have that. We're also delighted that the building has a roof, that there are trees growing in it. We typically don't see that as well. It's a really solid core and shell, which is absolutely wonderful. And we see exactly the big tip that you guys have had and why you've kept it here as a piece and a tool, so where some may see, and certainly see great opportunity for this. And we see it being the anchor to that corridor and coming through. So, our assertion goes right on real estate, it's, we choose to do these type of projects, we jokingly say that, we don't do easy, it's kind of our sub-motto for our company. So we enjoy these challenges, but we really enjoy the end product and seeing how the communities are able to interact with those particular products as they come forward. I'll mention additionally that because of the type of projects these are, and because this is an opportunity zone, potentially has an investment that way, as well as the historic tax credits that are part of it, that we are long-term holders of property as well. These are not the type of properties where you come in, use these stacks, you build them, you fill them up, and you sell and you're gone. So, we take a much longer approach in terms of how the programming is done, how we put those things in place, and making sure that we're picking partners that can be with us, not for a short period of time, but for a long, sustainable time. Our other goal as we look to do the breaking thing with this is not to take things from other areas of the city and bring this into the building, but what can we do to add to the things that already exist within the city? So it's not addition through subtraction, but how do we actually do addition in terms of opportunities and businesses? And it's great to see a business incubator, entrepreneurship things in the city, those are individuals that we certainly look towards and look forwards to trying to help and support as they launch their businesses as well. So, should have probably started, we certainly look, but I appreciate your patience allowing me to do that at the end.
Thank you, Brian. Counselor, what questions do we have?
So, if you could repeat for me, like, how long does this project take once you...
Yeah, please, start construction. It'll be sixteen months total from beginning to end.
What other questions do we have? My only question would be for staff, do we need a motion to extend the purchase agreement?
Counsel has the option if they'd like to, I would recommend if you want to add a new business item with a motion to amend the agenda, it could be item ten-five, and then simply make a motion to direct the city manager and myself to execute an extension on the previously executed purchase agreement with the Jeffers Group. If I heard correctly, looking to close by September, is that correct?
September fifteenth, correct.
So, probably make the extension through the end of September, that way we can paper it appropriately and let them finish their due diligence and get it closed.
Okay. Yes, please. Okay, it's been moved to add the item. Supported, any discussion on the item?
Is it to add the, add the item on the agenda?
Yes, sir. Okay. We are, we are challenging. We are challenging the clerk tonight. Okay, well, I mean, seated or hearing no questions, I just want to thank you guys for coming again, coming to town directly to speak to us and update us on where things are in the project. We got great faith in seeing this happen. So, I've been speaking life to it since, since we met almost a year ago.
That's right.
That this is gonna happen, and Jackson is looking forward to it, and we know we got the right partners to make it happen.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that, we appreciate all the efforts and Scott Fleming, and we would be remiss if we didn't thank him for all of his connection points and helping us get to here collectively, so.
Absolutely, shout out to Scott and all the hard work. Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. That brings us down to...
Start the vote on the...
Oh, thank you, oh, that's what he was mumbling as he... Okay, so the clerk will tally and display the vote. It just says, voting in progress.
I basically had to like hide it and then unhide it, and then it popped up.
And unhide it. Okay, okay, got a co-pilot.
Got you.
All right. Motion carries. Brings us down to item number six, looking for a motion in support to open a public hearing to receive citizen comment on the city's housing and community development needs. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seated or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote.
Just keep hitting hide, show, hide, show, hide, show.
Before we get started, just want to read the rules for speaking before city council. Number one, each speaker will state their name and address. Number two, during public hearings, the city council may enact a timeline, may enact a timeline on all speakers to ensure that all present get an equal chance to speak. Council members may answer questions during this time. Number three, each speaker shall be polite and courteous to the council and members of the public in attendance. While any speaker is free to express his or her opinion on any subject, no speaker may direct personal attacks at any member of the staff or council unrelated to the manner in which they perform their duties, use obscene language while addressing the city council, or engage in disruptive or disorderly behavior during a council meeting. Number four, should the mayor determine that any of the items listed in number three occur, the mayor may declare the speaker out of order. Number five, if a speaker is declared out of order by the mayor and refuses to cease and assist from disruptive or disorderly conduct, the mayor may order the person removed from the meeting. Jennifer Biddinger.
Good evening. Is there a limit on this one?
No, we have to keep it on topic.
Okay, wow, that's neat. Okay, so, I would like to speak a little bit about, I went on the site to see what this is all about, and if I was supposed to be speaking about a specific topic or general about housing and so forth. So, I didn't find anything out about that. I did call my homeless friend, tried to get her to come tonight and speak to you for her opinions and her input from that perspective, and she said she just couldn't do this type of thing. So, from here, kind of to maybe relay her feelings a little bit, and then also my perspective of being a landlord in the city of Jackson. So, I wanted to say that this whole presentation from this Hayes Hotel is interesting, it was the first I heard of it, and I'm looking forward to there being a lot more rental properties in the city of Jackson, because I know that it is a dire need from being a landlord myself and not even needing to advertise when any of our rentals come up, because, you know, people are just waiting and waiting for an opportunity. And we also have a desire, had a desire to purchase other properties to help, you know, help make that possible for other people, but it has been such a horrific experience trying to keep everything according to what the city expects. And so I just kind of wanted to share that, from our tenants' perspective, most people just want a place where they can live as they please, in their home with, you know, the natural rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. They not like all the regulations that are put on it, they do not like being constantly invaded by inspectors coming into their property and having to stress out about that, and we particularly don't like that either. I just wanted to say from my own personal life, we rented, we were renters, poor renters, for a lot of our life up till we had at least six kids, and it was very difficult to find a place. And we were very happy just to have, you know, a roof over our head, and we weren't worried about regulations that the city imposes. We had cement floors with some rugs on it, we used the bathroom or the basement sink sometimes for washing our dishes. We didn't have high expectations of having anything, we didn't worry about burn spots on our rugs, or holes, little tiny holes in our screens, or there's just such a list of things that are so cosmetic and much better than our own personal residence that we have to follow. And I don't know, I don't have the solutions, I don't know exactly, obviously, our tenants are very happy to be there, they've been there some more than ten years, and they're thankful, but to have, they don't require a luxury home like these apartments might be, and that might cause the people out in the home to move into the urban areas and have a nice place like that. I don't really know how it works, but I'm concerned about the home, the rental homes out in the city that could be used for homeless people or for, you know, whatever, but we don't have the opportunity to get in there. I don't think Jackson is a landlord slash ministry-friendly place to have these homes for these affordable housing for people. So, I don't know, I just wanted to put in my input, and can I say, we can't see those results from back here if that little box could be bigger, and then we also can't see who voted which way, so, thank you so much.
John, and you just told me how to say your name two weeks ago, remind me again. One more time.
Light.
John Light, Light of Light.
John Light, Pleasant Lake, Michigan. On this housing issue, you know, it's been discussed, the shortage of housing in particular, but one of the things, I got a couple suggestions on the block grant funds that you guys are gonna get ready to spend. My first suggestion would be something that you should not do. The city has once again demonstrated with the house over on Hollywood Street, that house lost twenty-nine thousand dollars, okay? That was a rehab attempt that didn't go well. Previous councils have done the same thing many times, and that's just not, it hasn't panned out any time that I can remember in the last few years. So you guys probably ought to get out of the housing rehab business. The other thing that you might do is, I heard a couple council people mention, I can't remember who it was, that up to four or five years ago, that when you guys pass these funds out, there would be almost like a meeting right there, and everybody would come and make their pitch, and you guys would simply say, okay, this is the one that we like the best, they get the money, this gets the money. You guys might want to go back to that system right there, that'll, you can kill two birds with one stone on that one. A, you'll get some of the money into the hands of the people that have been occupying that space for many, many years. And the other thing that might help you out on that is, you know, I've been watching this homeless situation going, we've had several nonprofits come up here saying that this was what we can do for you, and you guys have pretty much snubbed everybody but the RIA. So, maybe if you start giving some of them nonprofits, some of the other ones that have been doing the work in the city, some money back, they might be willing to help you a little more, because just the way I'm seeing it right here, I'm not sure that any of them folks are willing to step forward after how they've been treated in these chambers for the last three or four meetings. So, just maybe give that some thought. Thank you.
Peter Bormuth.
Peter Bormuth, one forty-two West Pearl Street. Ever since I first became active in city politics, I have desired that the Hotel Hayes would be renovated. I was in Patrick Birch's office every month trying to push that project, it never came to fruition while he was city manager. I'm encouraged by this presentation, I hope this company can deliver, I feel like the Hayes Hotel would be an anchor for this side of the community, the way the Consumers Energy offices are an anchor on the other side of the city. I hope this project comes to fruition. I want to talk about the homeless situation, how... So just, just maybe give that some thought. Thank you.
Peter Bormuth.
Peter Bormuth, one forty-two West Pearl Street. Ever since I first became active in city politics, I have desired that the Hotel Hayes would be renovated. I was in Patrick Birch's office every month trying to push that project. It never came to fruition while he was city manager. I'm encouraged by this presentation. I hope this company can deliver. I feel like the Hayes Hotel would be an anchor for this side of the community, the way the Consumers Energy offices are an anchor on the other side of the city. I hope this project comes to fruition. I want to talk about the homeless situation, housing for the homeless. We, the city council approved this, um, proposal and budget from Residence in Action. And I, I had a couple of comments about that, and I hope the city council will pay attention. Um, number one, the operational data lead, um, which would be Tasha Carter, who is the executive director of Residence in Action, is paid at a rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for fifty hours. I'd like to point out to you that the people who work for the county as the county defense attorneys only get sixty-five dollars an hour. So you as, give the county, Tasha, and these attorneys who are the defense attorneys, who you, they have to do the same thing. They have to meet clients, they have to empathetically listen to their complaints, the reasons why they were asked it or whatever. They, they have to ask pertinent friendly questions. They have to maybe go to court with these people. Um, Tasha does the same thing, coletting that data. But they, um, she's being paid twice as much as people with law degrees? I, I mean, I have a serious question about that. Why? What are the qualifications that determine that rate of compensation? I just asked the city council that question. There are two other, um, issues that I had with the proposal that you approved. Number one, there's a food, food cards category, a hundred dollars per week for people who are lodged, um, by the city in these hotels, um, and that's four hundred thousand dollars. Now, most homeless people that I know have bridge cards. Seriously, most homeless people I know already have bridge cards, but if they don't, they can get an emergency bridge card right away. I mean, it, it takes a very short period of time. So if they, I'm wondering why there's forty thousand dollars here, and I'm concerned that that is easy to tap, and not for the people who are homeless and put into the hotels. So I'd like to see an accounting for all those hundred dollar cards that are given away. There should be a name associated with that, and it should be one of the people that like to be housed in the hotel by our IA and the city. There's also a clothes, uh, here, and that's twenty thousand dollars. I find clothing left behind by homeless people all the time. I mean, they, they can't carry it with them, they're always discarding clothing, leaving it behind. But I'm concerned that they do have good clothing, I mean, and warm clothing for our winter. But once again, I want to make sure that these funds are going to the homeless people, that are, we are housing in these hotels, and not being diverted into any other areas. So there should be a name associated with each one of these appropriations that are approved by RIA. I just want to say that it's important to create structures where corruption cannot flourish, and that is your job as a council. It, once you create structures where corruption is possible, it will occur. Thank you.
John C. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John King, two zero three Third Street. I was kind of thinking I wouldn't speak, but with Pierre Bormuth, uh, you know, I, I agree with all his concerns and, uh, with this Residence in Action, uh, trying to address the homeless issue. Apparently, they're already done with their work. I don't know, maybe they put in three weeks of work and they've, you know, apparently, maybe they think they've solved the, the homeless issue or, or something like that. I, I sort of complained about, like, with Tasha, uh, you know, kind of greatly exaggerating the group's abilities and stuff like that. There, there's individuals that she used for that that are actually part of other groups. Let's say Toby Berry's is a member of Residence in Action. You know, but she's also a community action agency. So with this homeless thing, with the bids, it's like Toby Berry is making a bid for a community action agency, but yet she's with the Residence in Action, and so, so she's part of two groups that are each bidding, and, and so there's an issue there with this homelessness issue. Tasha mentioned, she had mentioned, uh, what a great job they did essentially with COVID, and, and it occurred to me that, uh, you know, early on in the pandemic, I, I could see the members, you know, out in the public or on Facebook, they weren't respecting the, you know, they tried to tell people, you know, kind of keep in small groups, maybe your family. They're having dinners without masks on and, and stuff like that and doing a lot of things. Tasha had gotten COVID pretty badly, and then she said she had gotten a COVID vaccine, but that was like well after the time that she was eligible for it, so was...
Hey, John, can we, um...
Uh, this has to do with the homeless and the...
Uh, so is housing and community development needs?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay.
So that's a couple hundred thousand dollars towards homelessness that you're, you're sort of blowing. And I, I'm trying to point out, you know, what a, what a shame you're wasting money like that on, you know, homelessness. So with this group, uh, and as I've complained about those pallet shelters, I think that's going to be a disaster. That's not a, a good solution to homelessness. It, it's not going to improve the housing stock of the city of Jackson. For all the, uh, I, I, I've heard the big issue is like two, especially like three-bedroom rental units, say, for instance. With all the demolitions, that kind of hurt that, I guess. But with all the demolitions, I, I sort of agreed with the program for the most part. There might have been some houses, but there were a lot of bad houses. So I'm sort of, uh, you know, with the, the housing. So with the Hayes Hotel, other projects, hopefully, uh, that will increase the housing stack or especially for rental units, and hopefully maybe up to like three bedrooms for, uh, maybe families with children. So, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I don't see any other submissions for public hearing council. Is there any comments that you would like to make on this public hearing? Okay, seeing or hearing none. On this particular public hearing, or you just want to make a public comment in general? Okay, if you want to make a comment during regular public hearing on that, you are more than welcome to, just fill out a blue slip for me and pass it up, and we will, we will take your comment during regular public hearing. Thank you, Chief. Any other comment on this public hearing? Okay, seeing or hearing none, uh, we will be looking for a motion in support to close this public hearing. Triple moved and supported. Any discussion under motion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay. Do you want me to tell everybody? Did you guys hear that? Refresh your screens because that item was added onto the agenda.
Yeah, I got mine.
Yeah, I got mine too.
Cool, the, on the added item? Okay, cool, cool. All right, that motion carried. Um, that brings us down to item number seven. All right, actually, do we need to vote to accept and place that, um, on file? No, okay, cool. Brings us down to item number seven, uh, citizen comment. Before we get started, just want to start by reading the rules for speaking before a city council during citizens comment. Number one, each speaker will state their name and address prior to addressing council. Number two, each speaker is limited to up to three minutes during this portion, the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Council members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Number three, each speaker should be polite and courteous to the council and members of the public in attendance. While any speaker is free to express his or her opinion on any subject, no speaker may direct personal attacks at any member of the staff or council unrelated to the manner in which they perform their duties, use obscene language while addressing the council, or engage in disruptive or disorderly behavior during a council meeting. Number four, should any speaker cause a breach of the peace through their conduct, the mayor may declare the speaker out of order. Number five, if a speaker is declared out of order by the mayor and refuses to cease and desist from disruptive or disorderly conduct, the mayor may order the person removed from the meeting. Number six, each speaker may speak once under public comment and may not yield their time to others. Jennifer Biddinger.
Jennifer Biddinger, Jackson, city of Jackson. I left out one little thing about the, the renting thing. Another huge problem is that we bought a wonderful, we were blessed to get a fixer-upper, and it wasn't but a very short time when the city was in there saying, you, you know, you need to comply with all the, all the, um, the rules and so forth, and we're going to be back for reinspection. And it was a high-pressure thing that really caused conflict because we were willing to put our own sweat and stuff into fixing up on a, on a reasonable amount of time, but we were forced to comply in all the fees that go with that. So if there was a possibility of allowing us to get a property and having a reasonable time to fix up all the, all the things that need to be fixed up, that would be a wonderful thing. Okay, um, I just want to make a comment about the sculpture, thirty thousand dollars I saw to make that sculpture of, of metal shapes. I just, I don't know, I, I, I just don't understand how, how we spend our money all the time. So I just wanted to make a comment on that. Uh, but lastly, I did want to, I don't know if you all are aware of the concerns of the public with the recent tweets and different things that are being, that were made by the chair of the Racial Equity Commission. And it has become a national exposed problem. And I just, I just wanted to present, I'm not prepared to present much other than to say, is the city council concerned with the fact that they have appointed this person to the Racial Equity Commission with the views that are very harmful and need to be said, we don't approve of this kind of speech and behavior? So just wanted to make that a public thing. Thank you so much.
Christopher, is that Locke?
Yes.
Okay.
And council members, um, six seven five South Alpine Lake Drive. And this is about the roundabout artwork, which I see as an opportunity. Those behind this art are probably smart, nice people doing their job. And aren't we glad a portion of construction must go toward art? But time and time again, it feels imposed, having little participation from the neighbors who live with it. Roundabout art is being treated like guardrails and light poles, and I might add, it's starting to look like it too. But we treat it an opportu- guardrail to be better than that. I studied urban planning at UCLA in California several years, and the number one lesson to avoid being a soulless government was simply to include the people. This community was shown four abstract sculptures chosen by who know to who, using an artist who came from the community, no, was a friend of someone, and who know why those four won out. They were presented, uh, and a short call for input was given, and the community was told which one abstract thing would be installed. And no one likes this. I'm sure a sculpture being placed in a roundabout has limitations. A variety of meetings in very different venues could have explained that, even as it lends to what the community wants and like. There may be reasons why representational art should stand in a place people could get close enough to, to appreciate it. And wouldn't it be nice if the city worked with the neighborhood to make an installation, maybe at the MLK Center? But without community, again, we have an abstraction that doesn't relate to the community, that doesn't really work with the community, and that manages to alienate the community. So why not hold it off and listen to input in a variety of news and get that up-close sculpture underway, even as the roundabout work is imagined, maybe created by local artists, something more relatable that the community helped shape? Thank you.
George Brown.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight as a member of the Martin Luther King Community Corridor Improvement Authority. And because of my membership on that body, I was asked to participate in discussions and meetings regarding public art at the roundabout that's, that's been put at the MLK and Morrell. I'm a big fan of public art, think public art adds vibrancy to a community. And so, you know, placing public art in a roundabout or anywhere else to me is, seems like a good idea. This process that we undertook, it wasn't some short overnight process. We started meeting in July of last year to go over some, some of, some of the ways that we might be able to, to get some public art on the south side of the city. After a bunch of meetings and interviews with artists, we put out proposals, the artists sent back their proposals. It was like fifteen or sixteen of them as a committee. We just went through the process and using our own scruples decided which ones we want to present to the public. So we went through this whole process, presented to the, to the public. There was email, um, feedback on this process. There was also a public meeting over at the King Center where the artists were actually in the room. People from the public could come and interview the artists, look at some of the artwork that they've done. And so there was plenty of opportunity for public input. As usual, in this city, there's a lot of talk after the fact, and everybody says, I didn't know this, and I didn't know that. Well, it was well-publicized. The work was hard, I thought that the committee did a good job, we enjoyed our time, and we think that we came up with something that's representative of the south side of Jackson and something that the members of the south side community will like and appreciate. One of the things that bothers me about this whole process now is that something different is happening. It's good that because we're going to end up with a couple of pieces of artwork that's going to be installed in a couple of different places. My main concern is the public input on the, from the original work that we did, the public input said, we voted for this guy, we want his art to go at MLK and Morrell. I still think that that's a good idea. If there's going to be other artwork that's going to be installed, fine by me. But what I'm standing on is the public input, and the people that we spoke with that represent the community on the south side said, they want this piece of art, and they want the art at a certain location. I'm standing with the public on that one because this is what we do. As a public body, we listen to the public and respond. I'm with the public on this one. Whatever the, the piece of artwork that got the most votes, that piece of artwork should go at the roundabout, at MLK and Morrell. If you want to put another piece of artwork, or five or ten, at different locations, I'm cool with that too. Because I think art is a great thing. And so I just wanted to make sure that the council understood that we put a lot of work in, we diligently did our thing, and we hope that, uh, everything works out and that the council is able to place this other piece of artwork where it deems necessary. Thank you, Connie, for your time today.
John Wilson.
Good evening, John Wilson, ten forty-five South Durant Street, Jackson, Michigan. As one of the previous speakers has already said, we are all aware by now, the public racist and hateful remarks that were made by Chair, the Chairwoman of the City of Jackson's Racial Equity Commission, Ms. Keisha Hamilton. I don't expect you to answer me, but maybe you can address this during council comments. Ms. Gunn, is whiteness evil? And are white women stupid? Mr. Dancy. Are white women stupid? And is whiteness evil? Ms. Robinson, is whiteness evil? And are white women stupid? Mr. Ford, is whiteness evil? And are white women stu- Ms. Binnell, is whiteness evil? And are white women stupid? That's what Ms. Keisha Hamilton say, said, stated in her tweets. Mayor Mahoney, is whiteness evil? And are white women stupid? This council chooses, can have a discussion on whether or not to remove Ms. Hamilton from the city's Racial Equity Commission. They can do so by a majority vote. Some on this council demanded the removal of the Sheriff Steel, and just a few years back, over his manhood's remarks. This deal is no different. Thank you.
John C. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John King, two zero three Third Street. And race politics is, uh, a main theme of what I want to talk about. Sadly, there's been, uh, mass shootings, especially this last week. Um, unfortunately, uh, there are a lot that got ahead of the news by claiming white supremacy. Most especially the Senate Majority Leader Chuck Schumer and, and a lot of others. I had seen Angela Tompkins give a MLK talk. Uh, she's the DEI person for Consumer Synergy. She started, uh, I, I seen some of her mentions that, you know, it's a six-year-old, like a slur, and I thought, oh, no. And, uh, so she got into some other things and, you know, ended up with suggesting, you know, she was told with her here that, you know, it couldn't be certain ways or she was, uh, she was being discriminated against. And, um, that's a common fallacy that a lot of these DEI people, you know, it would be a very rare case, let's say if it's a white woman, you know, they have a princess lair. Maybe someone might mention that, you know, in a certain position, you know, something that's obviously a joke. But this, you know, black women being discriminated against, against their, here. But the sort of like a hoax, unfortunately. Um, which, speaking of hoax, uh, there was the Proud Boys sign-up hoax to support Keisha Hamilton. Now Keisha's basking in the limelight, you know, that there's been national news about her comments. You know, uh, she said, oh, I'm, you know, just talking about whiteness, that's different from white people. But then, of course, you know, there were other tweets and things that came out that where she specifically stating white people and, uh, you know, saying they're bad or, or what have you, and evil. I have to mention, uh, MLive, unfortunately, there was a disgusting article, Martin Slaughter had it of the last JPS board meeting where he suggested sort of like, oh, some people think that maybe you could think that, uh, Keisha Hamilton's comment was racist, and then he ends up giving Keisha Hamilton's statement and Maisha Jones' statement that was just ridiculous, obvious. And I, I talk about the media being the enemy, and, you know, there's MLive. And, but again, I mean, uh, you know, I don't expect you to get, uh, dump Keisha Hamilton, but, you know, it would be nice if you could. Thank you.
Janet Meyer Jackman.
Hi, I'm Janet Meyer Jackman. I live at eight, seven eighty-three Briar Cliff in Jackson. And I serve on, uh, Jackson Public Arts Commission, and I would have submitted, um, was on the, uh, the inaugural chair of the Jackson Public Arts Commission in the, in the past. My mouth is really dry. This past year, J-PAC was asked to search for sculpture, um, for the MLK Roundabout. J-PAC voted to create the Martin Luther King Roundabout Sculpture Selection Committee. Transparency and communication to the residents of Ward One became our greatest goal, to which all were involved, to which all who were involved were stellar, did great work. Um, the MLK Roundabout Committee guided, created guidelines for sculpture selection. The committee felt, in order to further seed trust between the city and Ward One, that the final selection of the awarded sculpture and artist should be left to the Ward One public votes. To assure that the finest pieces were selected, the committee issued a call for sculpture, reviewed, injuried all submitted proposals. Three sculptors were selected from the proposals submitted. Maxwell M.K. of Chicago, Douglas Jones, Chris Turner of Detroit, and Ken Thompson of Blissfield. The city issued a call for public comment on each sculpture. Email responses were sent to Kelly Hoover, following the guidelines to further tran- further transparency and trust. The committee held public gathering at the MLK Center and invited residents of Ward One to come meet each artist and hear their presentation, as well place their vote for the sculpture they wanted to be installed in the MLK Roundabout. Both email votes and in-person votes were tallied and clearly set. Maxwell M.K. far out front of Douglas Jones, Chris Turner, slash Chris Turner, there's two working on that one, and Ken Thompson. Ward One had voted, Path to Progress by Maxwell M.K. was their choice. The committee believed the correct choice by vote had been made and were ready to pro- uh, proceed to submit our recommendation at an emergency meeting of the Jackson Public Arts Commission, which was bypassed. What we do know is that J-Pac, is that J-PAC bylaws were ignored. Why? Once the MLK Roundabout Selection Committee left, left the office of Kelly Hoover, who did a stellar job working on this, the committee is not sure what happened, but we do know the next thing. A community of shapes by Douglas Jones slash Chris Turner was placed on tonight's agenda to be approved for installation, not Maxwell M.K.'s. This has stunned each committee member, and we all share a level of disrespect of our time and the political sway away from the public vote. Respect, transparency, and trust were swept away, and the misstep decision to change the outcome were not respecting Ward One's community choice, which negates their vote and voice. This, this does not grow trust between the city and Ward One, it only undermines it. I respectfully recommend that the city council amend, amend, amend tonight's agenda line, item eleven point four under new business regarding the award of the MLK Roundabout sculpture. City county, county members, please vote to award-
Thank you, Janet. I'll let you go a little bit extra as a, as a committee member of one of our committees.
I only got two more sentences.
I'm sorry. I gotta, I gotta say thank you, I gotta wrap you up.
Can I add two sentences?
Thank you.
Okay.
John Light.
John Light, Pleasant Lake, Michigan. The first thing I want to do is apologize to you guys. I was up here at the last meeting here, I think it was on January tenth, and I was referencing the last two meetings you had of last year, December thirteenth and December twentieth. Uh, in my comments last week, I ref, or at the meeting, the last meeting, I referenced them dates several times. And once, one of the times I inadvertently meant to say December thirteenth and said December thirtieth. So I don't know if that caused any confusion. I think everybody knew where I was coming from on that meeting. So if that caused any confusion amongst all of you, I apologize for that. We'll go back to the meeting that I was talking about, and I had a little concern that you guys purchased them pallet houses without sending it out for bid. I didn't, I didn't really think that was right. I asked the four votes that voted for it if they possibly comment on that and tell the people where, where that vote came from. There was only, uh, only one of the people made a comment, that was Ms. Binnell. Now she had an answer or comment at, in the end of the meeting. Or, I'm sorry, before the end of the meeting, she commented first, okay? It got around to the mayor who was going to speak, and he deferred it to Jonathan or the city attorney. Mr. Green had a good point. He said, due to the purchasing policy, sole, sole sourcing, and there were some other circumstances, scarcity of resources, emergent need. It was in his opinion that it was okay for council to do that. He mentioned a memo. Now, I never saw the memo. I don't know whether that memo was privy to the public or not, but there was a little concern. Something still stinks right there because if he sent the memo out, I have no idea when the memo was sent out. It could have been sent out when we originally talked about pallet houses. It could have sent out, he wasn't at the meeting that you guys voted that at. It could have been sent out before that meeting. It could have been sent out after you guys made the vote. So, in everybody's comment, nobody mentioned the memo. So, I don't, I don't really know how it is. It's like, did anybody get the memo? That seems strange to me. So, I guess you guys tried to get a good answer to that, but something still smells funny on that one. Thank you.
Peter Bormuth.
Peter Bormuth, one forty-two West Pearl Street. Um, I want to honor the work that the, um, Art Commission did. Um, I also want to say that the final sculpture that's being proposed here tonight, I think it's ugly. But, I mean, I didn't go and I didn't comment, and I wasn't part of the process. But it's not something that I personally would choose. Um, I want to speak about Keisha Hamilton's comments. I want to talk real quickly about whiteness and blackness. Um, in the ancient world, there was no color prejudice. I don't know if you know that, but, um, like the Greeks thought in opposites, white and black, light and dark, night and day. But they didn't assign a moral quality to either concept. And, um, the Greeks also had their Black Athena. You know, she was a goddess of the city of Athens. Um, they had their sister states in Egypt. And in case you don't know, all the fair goddesses of Upper Egypt were black. So the Mediterranean was a community that did not have color prejudice. Color prejudice was invented by a man named Barnabas. He was a contemporary of Saint Paul. And he was the first person to say, he was a Christian, he was a proselytizer like Saint Paul. And he went out and said, the devil is the black one. Black skin is a sign of sin. Blackness is evil. And this was the origin of color prejudice. Saint Augustine accepted those things, and later on Pope Nicholas the Fifth issued a bold, dumb, diverse that allowed the Portuguese to enslave the Moors, heathens, and other enemies of Christ. And they were found in Guinea, in Africa, and that started the African slave trade. So to say something is evil is dangerous. And I communicated an email, and that's, um, Keisha enslaved, and I suggested that she use the words evil is danger. Or, and I superior it and, or, and that's, or white ignorance, but not whiteness. Because well, is danger evil? And I superior it up. What happened to black people? And I don't think we want to do that. Thank you. And it was the Christians who did it.
From the looks, I think we are clear of all citizen comments at this time. Moves us down to item number eight, petitions and communication from city staff and other governmental entities looking for a motion and support to place and accept on file the CDBG H O M E, CDBG C V, homeless prevention financial summaries through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, motion's carried. Brings us down to item number nine, consent calendar, looking for a motion to support to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, consent calendar has passed, brings us down to other business. Item ten-one, evaluate city homelessness efforts discussion. I think we will just defer the start of this conversation to city manager. Any pertinent updates?
Yeah, I think really the only update is to, um, as everyone on this, uh, council knows, we had three tours of TA Wilson School, um, with about thirty participants, um, from council and the community to look at that space, evaluate that space, generate some ideas of really around two questions. Who should be involved, um, on a going-forward basis for developing some plans? And then what should be provided in that space, um, given the requisite partners? All centered around, um, homelessness, homelessness prevention, and the support services required to get people back on their feet. So, it was, there were good conversations, um, during the tours, and some people have indicated they'd like to start meeting, um, together to drum up some plans and form some partnerships. And then one entity has reached out to, um, to me to start a direct dialogue, to see what, what can be, uh, determined for the end use of that building. And so I'm looking forward to that as it shapes up. I briefly give an update, um, from Residents in Action. They are overwhelmed with, uh, requests for service. Well over two hundred people on the waiting list right now. And also want to remind everybody that the homeless count, um, is tomorrow morning, beginning six AM. And, uh, so this will help, uh, again, inform the need that we're trying to address. We have a lot of anecdotal information, we have some hard information and data, and tomorrow's another opportunity to get some of that hard data. So that's pretty much all I got, Mr. Mayor.
So just a, a question for, for clarification that just like immediately pops up in my mind, especially with Count Day being tomorrow. Count Day only counts individuals who are literally physically on the streets, uh, of Jackson homeless right now. And with the work that Residents in Action is doing, there's quite a few people being temporarily housed in hotels. So those individuals, and I- So those individuals, and I, I don't see anyone from Continuum of Care, but Angelita, uh huh, see, I don't, I didn't want to mix that, but I know, I know, I know. But if you wanted to speak on that, you can, you're more than welcome to, because I think that should be clarified, that those individuals who are currently temporarily housed will not be counted as homeless in that count.
Yeah, you're right. That, you're correct. And again, as CAA mentioned when they were here during their presentation, the, the pick count, the date is not determined by CAA. It's determined
Sorry, pick count is placed in
I'm sorry, point in time.
Point in time, there we go.
Yep, thank you, point in time. So that's not determined by CAA. It's determined by HUD. And so yeah, you are correct in that anybody who is not on the street will not be counted. Who's not unhoused will not be counted. Yep.
Quick clarification.
So it may skew the data for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further update?
That is it, sir.
Any other questions from council regarding this particular item?
Yeah, I, I was hoping maybe at the next meeting, I'm assuming these updates are gonna continue periodically. We could have an accounting of, of how much money has been spent and where it's been spent.
Yes, we can.
I, I do think that there's been kind of a, a running update that's been provided, but I think a formal financial update would answer some, some questions that we've had from public, so. Any other questions, comments, concerns on this particular item?
I do have one, and again, I wish someone from COC was here, I mean, obviously Angelita's here. So Angelita might be able to answer this question. If, if the individuals that Ria is helping are obviously not on the street, and it's going to affect the pick count, is that going to, what, is that gonna have any negative impact in terms of funding or anything like that, that we would be getting from HUD? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't want to step into that one.
Yeah, okay.
And Toby did text me earlier and said she apologizes for not being able to be here tonight, because I'm sure she would have been able to address some of those questions. So I do want to mention that she did let me know ahead of time that she apologized for not being here, so. Any other questions on this particular item? Okay, seeing or hearing none, we'll move to item 10, two. Looking for a motion and support to adopt the second and final adoption ordinance of number 2023-1.
No support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Motion carries. Didn't pop back up that quickly this time. Okay. And that brings us down to 10-3. Looking for a motion and support for the second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 2023-2.
No support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, motion carries. That brings us down to 10-4. Looking for a motion and support for the second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 2023-3.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Okay, seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Right?
This is so much more suspenseful.
It is. And green dots ain't lighting up.
No.
I'm proud of us. Okay, motion carries. Brings us down to new business.
Oh, we have 10.5.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, that, I didn't, mine didn't update. Hang on. There it is. That's an important one. Okay, looking for a motion and support for item number 10.5, contract extension for Hayes Hotel.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify it a little bit, can I make a motion with some dates and some, yeah, it's okay, okay.
Absolutely.
I'd like to move to direct the city manager and city attorney to execute an extension of the previously executed purchase agreement dated April 11th, 2022 between the city and J. Jeffers Company LLC, extended to December 31st, 2023.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions or discussions on the, I'm sorry.
I have a feeling you fed him that.
That's all from memory.
I think that is the motion.
That is the motion.
Yeah. Yep.
Detail.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, motion carries. And now we are down to new business. Item number 11.1. Looking for a motion and support for the first extension of the 2022 As Needed Materials Testing Services contract in the amount of $125,000.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote.
Sorry, how was that today?
Okay, motion carries. Brings us down to 11.2. Looking for a motion and support for overhead doors project at Jackson Fire Department Station 1.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Yes, ma'am.
So, it sounds like the windows project came under, which will help support the house for the overage of the overhead door. Is there still a shortfall with that proceeding or is it?
No, we, we actually are still, we'll, we'll, between the two projects, we'll be about 18,000 under budget.
I didn't want to steal his thunder. I knew the answer, but.
Any other discussion? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. And the motion carries. Brings us down to 11.3. Looking for a motion and support for windows update project at Jackson Fire Department Station Number 1.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Yes, it is. I would concur with that. Seeing or hearing no further discussion, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, motion carries. And brings us down to 11.4. Looking for a motion and support on the approval of Doug Jones and Chris Turner Community of Shapes art sculpture for the MLK Boulevard Roundabout, and for the city attorney and parks and recs director to move forward with the artist's agreement including delivery and installation for not to exceed of $30,000.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to could I like to have that item postponed?
I'll support that.
So is that a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone that item.
To the next meeting, or just lay on, okay, perfect.
So it's moved and supported. So I guess we can have discussion.
You want to start with me?
Sure, if you want to start.
The comments that we heard tonight, I too was a part of that committee, and I feel that we were very transparent.
I too was a part of that committee, and I feel that we were very transparent. And the complaints I have heard over the timeframe, but I feel that we did make all steps known to, to the public. I mean, we were meeting as a committee. There were two people who reside in the ward, myself, and then Keisha also lives in that ward. So I feel that we were represented, represented by the ward. And then we brought the meeting to King Center to present what the committee had narrowed it down to. As Mr. Brown said, we had several, but we asked for artwork that would support the renewing of Ward 1, bringing life back into that ward. So I do feel that we had that in mind when we reviewed the other artwork. I also feel that placing any artwork that was designed for Martin Luther King Drive in another location would not be in our best interest. I feel that both pieces, if we continue to go forward with both pieces, should be somewhere along MLK Drive. MLK Drive, the Corridor Authority starts at Franklin. However, Martin Luther King Drive starts further north and goes all the way to South Street. So I just want to make it clear that I think the committee and the persons that were a part of this core group did our best. And I mean, we asked for artwork, and we narrowed it down to those three artists, and we brought it right into the neighborhood for, at King Center, for people to make comments. Things were posted on our website. Things were posted, I'm, I'm available, email. No one reached out to me to express their disappointment until we presented the, the final pieces. So I just feel that we need to take another look at this. I don't think that it's fair for us not to go with what the community voted for. Clearly, the one piece outweighed the other. And so that going a different route with that, to me, doesn't make me feel that we're doing what the community would like. So with that, I just want to, you know, clearly say I think we need to honor what the people's choice were, was. And, you know, the artists even came to the King Center for that meeting. They were there. Comments could have been made. Emails could have been sent to the Recreation Department, could have been sent to me, the mayor, any council member if you don't live in the, in the ward. But what we received clearly demonstrates another piece. All the artwork was good. I think we did a good job narrowing it down, and I think that, you know, we gave everybody the fair chance to make their, their voices heard. So with that, I think we need to give this a couple more weeks, I guess, and see what we can do to, and make this right. I just feel doing, doing the choice of the residents in the area and the neighborhood, that should be how we go forward with this, instead of changing that at the end of the game and putting something there that wasn't voted for by the people that did voice their opinion. Everybody had the opportunity to. I think that's all I have.
I do have a question, based on the public comment. So there, I've heard, I apologize, thank you. So I heard that there was a committee in Ward 1, and then I heard that there was the Art Commission. So how were those groups interrelated, and how were, why were there two decisions, I guess? I'm, I don't, I'm not sure how, how, how that occurred.
There was a joint committee between the CIA and JPAC. And of the submissions, the submission that I presented to you tonight was the one that fit the budget. Opinions are great, and voting is great, but they were, artists were given a budget. And the, as far as I could tell, Maxwell MK, through the submissions and talks at MLK, needed more resources. And so I felt it was right, just like a bid for, heck, at, at the wastewater plant, the water plant for trucks, to put in front of you something that fit the direction, the directive at the start of this, was to erect a sculpture, a piece of art for $30,000 and not a penny more. So that's why we're, this was tonight.
Okay, so that, okay, I didn't have that background.
So everybody's paid and everybody's budget included in the agenda?
Uh, in the packet? I believe so, Kelly. Put it there. Yes, it is. So, to directly answer your question, that's why.
Okay.
Yep, that's on me.
No, I appreciate that, because I don't, I don't feel like that was clear to me in the materials, so.
Two questions. One, when we did the RFP for, or when we, you know, when we sent this out to bid, did we give the artists the budget that we had?
Yes.
Okay, that answers that question. Two, I, just because I know we've had a couple of questions about it, where is the money coming from for this budget?
It is coming from the historical place that art has been used, dedicated to art and city, and that is cell tower revenue. Now, the second piece of art, we would use the proceeds from the sale of the old locomotive that is out at RA Green Park or the wastewater plant. They just chose to pay us in one lump sum, so we have money to cover another sculpture.
Thank you. So there are two sculptures. There are two sculptures.
Yes, we, the idea was talked about tonight a roundabout way, but was hoping to have council also evaluate a proposal to put the other sculpture at the Parkside Roundabout.
Got it.
Fill, I was filling the blank, I should probably, should start with that.
Okay. Much appreciated. That's helpful. Thank you.
Will, did you have any comments?
No.
Okay, so I will, I will comment. I don't think that we should delay this, and I will also give some additional context to, to my opinion. So I think that what we probably, first of all, what we probably should have done a better job at is explaining that the public input was literally for public input, right? So I think that was one thing that we kind of missed on, is that we should have explained it. It was for public input. Because there's more to selecting
Sure.
than just the visual look of the piece itself. If we're going to wait, my question is, how much longer do we need to wait and what are we waiting for? We did a phenomenal job at getting the word out and collecting information far before the public event happened where the community was invited out. And I think this happens in a lot of cases where we are seeking public input, seeking public input, and then a decision gets made. And then, once the decision is made, more people say, oh, well, I didn't get a chance to weigh in on that decision. And I think that all of you guys know that in our line of work, not every decision that we are, are going to be faced with making is going to align with every opinion. And when you're talking about something as subjective as art, it's never going to align with the opinions of the majority or all of people. For me, I intentionally stayed away from personally evaluating the pieces themselves, because they all looked great. All the art that was submitted was great. I think only one, I felt like totally missed the mark, one out of the four, that is, right? What I looked at being, and like, the, the lens that I looked at, and especially in decision-making for tonight, is who submitted a full proposal. Full proposal is much further than the piece itself. Because it's great if you can submit a great piece of artwork for us to consider, but the missing part, and that's most critical, that we're going to be held accountable for, is can you stay on time and can you stay on budget? If you look at the proposals that were submitted, there's only one proposal that gives great detail on how they plan to stay on time and exactly how they plan to stay on budget. So much so, that I've not only brought it up to the city manager, I also brought it up to a few of the people who are under Arts Commission. I said, I have concerns, because as it stands right now, there's only one proposal that gave a full proposal. What's going to happen when the opinions of our responsibility do not match up with the opinions of the public? This is the exact issue that I was concerned about. Should we go back to these artists and ask them to provide a full detailed list of how they plan to make this happen? It was also a concern, because first question that I was asked, when I was going around to ask the artists, not about their opinions of, not, like, not trying to get an opinion of which piece, but trying to dig deeper and find out what inspired the piece, right? Like, what, tell me the story of how you came up with this. And in conversation, one of the first questions that I was asked is, well, if I get awarded this, is there a possibility for me to get more than the thirty thousand dollars if it requires that? That instantly raised a red flag to me. That in combination with there only being one proposal that gave a full scope of how to make it happen, it's great if you just say, yes, I can stay on budget. But it's another thing to put that budget on paper, to show how you plan to stay on budget. Because what happens if we get halfway through, quarter of the way through, three-fourths of the way through, getting that piece completed, and their budget runs out? Does that fall on us? Does that fall on the artists? Does the piece get completed? Do they solicit for more money? Will they have to fundraise? Where does that leave us at? Those are all questions that, for myself, we have to consider. And again, when you look at, if you take the, the visual way, because my biggest desire, and everyone who I spoke to about this, my biggest desire was, yes, please let the choice align with what the public chooses, right? And then I, I went further and I asked, well, should we go back to them? And from all of the committee members said, well, we had Zoom calls with each independent artist and we explicitly explained to them that their proposal needs to include the scope of work from a cost perspective. That is my biggest concern. What is this going to cost? All the pieces look great. These were the pieces that were the most popular out of all sixteen. Is this the public vote? No, but I also don't think we got the full opinion of the, of the entire public either. This is just a, a scope or a piece of the, the people who actually gave input. And I think our biggest responsibility is to take a look further and deeper than the visual of the piece itself. Take your opinion away from the piece. The piece does not matter in our seat, to me. If you're looking at those proposals, and we are fiscally responsible for making a decision, which proposal has the piece that we can say with confidence will stay on time and on budget?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So did everybody submit a budget or not?
No, the proposals are in the packet that were submitted, no, they didn't.
Right. So could we reach out to them and have them submit a proposal?
I think the question, my question would be, is that fair? Because each person was told explicitly that they need to submit a budget with their proposal. Everyone was told the same information. I mean, I think that that's the, it's definitely up to council on what we do. Each artist has guaranteed that they can stay within budget. But to actually provide a breakdown of what that budget looks like, to give us that guarantee, one piece gave that.
It's unfortunate. And I hate to be the fuddy-duddy who does it, but I mean, you all know, like, I'm pretty triggered by bidders who give us one thing and then try to change things before they even award it on the bid, so.
It's kind of like when we went to the homeless bit, and only one was full, remember?
Yeah.
A couple months ago.
Yeah. So I just echo what the mayor said, from the city's standpoint. It, it's unfortunate that they liked, the people who turned out liked one over the other. But up here is a different set of, a different lens that needs to be viewed on for, for deciding. And it actually has nothing to do with how the art piece looks.
So I think in the case of the homeless proposals, we had people on the street that were cold and literally dying, right? In this case, if we postpone installing an art sculpture for two weeks, is that hurting anybody?
So my question would be.
So I can get some more information about what the hell happened?
Yeah, yeah, so my question would be, to what end? I mean, how, what's going to happen in two weeks that's going to make a difference from tonight?
We could find out how much the other proposals would cost, especially the ones that got more public votes, perhaps?
So can I offer an, an alternative though? So, and I, I wish we would have just put it on, on the agenda tonight, because I think that this would have kind of satisfied the, this part of the conversation. We recently sold the locomotive from over on Lansing Ave. I think that we could easily agree to purchase the popular vote piece in addition. But in my opinion, from the perspective of the proposal itself, who gave the clear proposal is, is pretty clear to me. That's, that's just my opinion. And I, I do kind of agree with the question of, like, if we're waiting for an additional two weeks, what additional information are we seeking to get within that two weeks that would make our decision different?
So what, I'm sorry.
So, I'm sorry.
So what you're saying is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If we wait the two weeks, the second piece, you're saying whoever wins between or provides the financial statement and the time log would be awarded for that second piece? Is that what you're saying? The first piece would still remain as Doug and Chris, and then the, the other two or the next highest, I don't know how we would really.
What would be the second piece?
Would be, the, I don't know which one we would say it would be. I mean, because what if?
The piece that won by popular vote, is what I would say.
Which is the Tower of Us.
Which is the Tower of Us.
Okay, because that's what I see from Kelly's email. Thank you. Sorry, I'm not playing with my phone, just.
So I don't know if Kelly wants to, like, come add some context or anything in addition to the conversation. But I've seen her eyes go up.
We're talking.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Green. Thank you for asking me to come up. I echo what Arlene and Jan and George talked about. It was a great committee to work with. We had Janet Meyer Jackman, we had Angela Edward from the Jackson Public Arts Commission, we had Keisha Hamilton from the Racial Equity Commission, and George Brown. Jack entered this conversation in June, in July, and what we were going to do, we put out an RFP. I did, it's in your packet, in the RFP, it does request a budget. Just for information's sake. And so the popular vote, as you just noted, was the Tower of Us by Maxwell MK. I did speak with Maxwell MK today, he did call about if the meeting was happening today and everything. He's in Chicago. I said, yes, it was. You know, I'm not sure what's going to come out of it, but I'll contact you after. Maxwell MK, Ken Thompson, and obviously Doug Jones and Chris Turner, all committed to that thirty thousand, not to, not to exceed thirty thousand. Maxwell MK did note that he doesn't know how much further out he could go, just because he has got other projects. I said, I'll keep that noted. That was the popular vote, with the second place being Doug Jones and Chris Turner's piece. And so it's very, there's some points between them that was the popular vote, but they were the one that followed through on the budget process per the RFP. One thing I do want to note, if I may, about the RFP that I thought was great, was Mr. George Brown wrote kind of like a ode to the South Side that went with the RFP, just trying to give, like, an idea of what we were looking for. So I really want to give him a thank you for writing that, because with the mixed art with government process, it's really hard, because art is so free-flowing. And I think the committee, we had several meetings, I don't think they talked about enough, was we had a scale process that we used with the Jackson Public Arts Commission. Everybody did it on their own, so we have no idea how people voted. We got together and collected those votes, and that's how we get, narrowed down to the artists that we had in the finals that attended the MLK Center Open House, which I thought was really impressive, to come the ways they came from different areas to do that. So that's kind of what the summation of that. But can I help answer any questions at all while I'm up here?
So it looks like there, two of them got fourteen votes as the second. So the Community of Shapes and Beyond the Mountain Tops.
Beyond the Mountain Tops, there was, when the first vote came through, that was listing the different votes, it had, like, those combined, that wasn't combined. I, in my email back, I separated each piece of art with the correct email and also the open house submissions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
So then I do have another question. That's helpful, thank you, Kelly Hoover. Thank you. So if we have the, if we have funds available from the sale of the train, which I'm really sad about, why are we, why are we entertaining two sculptures instead of paying for the one that got the popular vote?
I'd like the city manager to answer that.
Okay.
Total, total, total fairness, total fairness. When we give out a budget and someone decides that they're, they're already intimating that they were going to go over, like I said before, I look it through a completely different lens. Art is great, everyone has their own ideas of what is art and what they like, what they don't like. I was able to step back and say, we have one proposal that fit the bill. And that's the proposal my recommendation is you go for.
So you said a number of these artists were going to go over, but didn't Kelly just say not five minutes ago that they all said they'd keep it under thirty thousand dollars?
Yes.
So.
Budget-wise.
What are we doing?
Where's the, where's the budget in the proposal though?
Sure, yeah. Okay, yeah.
But I think, I think Angelita's question was more of, like, how, where's money coming from? Because we didn't have the locomotive, so when we embarked on this.
Yes, when we, the, the, we didn't have that, the lump sum payment, even up until drafting and putting out the agenda, agenda packet. I think it's really fresh.
So where's the original money?
Back, that's, as I said, previously, cell phone tower revenue, which has traditionally been dedicated for public art here in the city of Jackson.
Okay, that's helpful. I just wondered why, I just wondered why we're now thinking of two, instead of just using either funding sources to pay for the one that's the popular vote?
It wasn't lost on me that the sector of the community came out and really enjoyed the, the one from Maxwell MK. So in my mind, coming into the meeting, I was hoping that we could have a discussion doing both. I didn't anticipate having a discussion of, we don't like the locations for one, but we can do both. I would hope that is enough to satisfy, but it doesn't sound like it is.
One comment, I guess, that I have. I'm, I'm one of the last people to poo-poo on art. I mean, I was, I'm on, I'm on Jackson Public Arts Commission. I was on the Bright Walls Committee for three or four years. But I guess I'm, my question is, I, I don't want to necessarily say no to two pieces of art if we have the funds, but we originally did an RFP for one piece of art. What can we do with the funds? Like, is there something more constructive that we can do with the funds from the locomotive that might be more impactful on the city? And so while we can still have one piece of art that we did an RFP for, we can still use the remainder of those funds that we have from selling the locomotive towards something else? That's just kind of a comment slash question.
I think there's always more things that we can do with any, any funds.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm just.
A barrage of projects, things that we could put money towards. I think that the ideal, in my opinion, was to, to try to, to try to give the opportunity to the artist that was the popular vote. But to me, I think when you, I mean, like, if, if this was a, this is how I'm looking at it. If this was a road project and someone said, yeah, I can stay in that budget. I can absolutely get that road resurfaced for you guys. Yep, I understand what the budget is, I can get that done. Right, I think what's making this a tough decision is the art piece is connected to it, right? But in the RFP, it asks for a budget. It doesn't ask for you to confirm that you can stay within the budget, it asks for a budget in the RFP.
So before we sign anything, can we tell them they need to sign that they'll stay within budget?
It goes back to being fair. If this were any other type of project, they're, they would be non-qualified bidders.
So then basically you're saying only one
Yes.
only one proposal dotted all their i's and crossed all their t's, so making everybody else ineligible?
Effectively, yeah. And my thought with this one-time money was, like, at least I could have you guys consider doing the other one too. Is, does it make everyone happy? No, but I haven't found consensus on anything about these art pieces. And I have learned a long time at the DDA and doing art related events, consensus on art? I mean, peace in the Middle East will happen before that.
Yeah, that's.
It really will.
Art is in the eye of the artist.
Yes. So that's why I, I'll say what I said before. I get to be the city manager fuddy-duddy. Did everyone follow the rules? No, one person did. That's what I get to bring to you guys to consider, and that's what I recommend you follow.
We're talking about art, we're talking about a public sculpture, we're not talking about road construction, we're not talking about housing the homeless. We're talking about a thirty thousand dollar piece of art in two-week wait time, and literally an email asking them to write down it'll cost thirty thousand dollars, instead of just telling Kelly in person, and then we can talk about it some more, right?
Those are all good things beyond my purview. I get to decide what's in front of me, what the information that I have.
And for what it's worth, I actually, personally, again, I, the beholder, I prefer the piece of art that's in front of us right now. I do, I prefer the Jones-Turner piece of art. But this process is, I feel like I could ask you the same question I asked you five minutes ago and get a different answer, over and over, and I, I want to find out what happened. And I want to find out what happened. What process we went through?
It's all in the packet. They had meetings, they had an RFP clearly laid out.
My only thing is, business is business. Like, we clearly gave them instructions on what they, on what we wanted, and they didn't complete the job that we had given them. And like, if, like, I mean, like you said, I mean, I understand it's art. Art is a completely different alleyway than public government. But if we just keep saying, oh, yeah, here, we'll give you a second chance versus like we did, like we would do an RFP in any other project, whoever completes, whoever fits the bill and completes everything properly to how we outline it, that's who should be getting the bid.
So then, I have a, I have a follow up to that, a process question. So then, why would we present all four proposals to the public as options if we were only going to entertain one?
Good one.
Yeah, that's, I didn't catch that soon enough, to be fair, with all the things.
So, we didn't have it to, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, that for me is the, that for me is the, is what I'm stuck with.
I'd also like to point out, if we're talking about process so much, wouldn't re-submitting a proposal outside of the scope of what we originally asked for disqualify them? I mean, we're talking about artists, local artists and art.
Because they.
And we've already gone outside the bounds for things a hell of a lot more serious.
Because they, because they included like additional services?
Yeah.
Like, I think it would be different if they didn't include something that we did ask for versus them not including something that we did ask for. Like, to me, to me, that, that's the difference. And again, I guess I'm, I'm curious. You keep saying, I want to find out what happened, I want to find out what happened. I mean, there's members of the commission here. There's also the director of our Parks Department here that you could ask those questions to right now. What the hell happened in this process? And how did it end up here? And I think those questions could be answered. Is there anything like critical that we need to do right now in the meantime? I think the only thing is exactly what Kelly just answered, which is, I don't know how long I can hold on for from the artist who she spoke to earlier. So, I think, in my opinion, if there's questions that you feel like need to be answered, I feel like, is there, like, who's not in the room that could answer those questions? Because I would be curious also if there's additional questions that need to be answered.
Well, I hadn't, Mr. Mayor, thought about that point. I don't feel that this project should have went to the public for a vote if we didn't have everything in place. That is an excellent point. That didn't cross my mind. I've been tied up with other things recently, but that's a good point. Why did we take all three of these pieces when only one of them qualified?
But that, that was a decision that this body made.
I didn't say that, but I'm just saying that, that to me warrants some consideration for the other two. Because they should have never gone to the public for the question, answer, whatever the process is, if we didn't have every piece that they needed.
Yeah. And I think the, the group working on that can better answer. My 30,000 foot view to Kelly is, hey, they say we can do it on budget. The finer points of what was submitted was left up to the, to the group, so that's only something they can answer.
I mean, for me personally, it's literally the first thing that jumped out at. Like, not even looking at the pieces themselves, looking at the scope of the details of how the project is going to be executed and completed, timelines on installation of the bases that it requires, the measurements of what that roundabout actually looked like, what it's going to take to actually install that piece, and the budget itself, materials cost, time cost, all of those things. And the one proposal is what made me look for it in the other proposals. So, why all four were presented, that's a question that we would have to ask that special committee that was put together, that you were a part of. You know, we would have to ask them that question, well, why was this submitted? If it wasn't all fully, like, if it wasn't a full proposal. But again, this is something that I also, I brought this to the attention of the, of the art commission. And when I brought it to the attention, it was with intention to say, should we go back to them and ask them for this additional information? And it was explained to me, they all had the same information. We had a call with each individual artist that we needed the full scope of the budget of the project, of the RFP, and everyone had the same information. I mean, if we're talking about it subjectively, again, like, we can, to me, I think this is easily solved through the democracy that we live in. Like, we can vote in whatever direction I'm 100% comfortable with. Whether we wait, whether the, the recommendation gets voted down and another recommendation gets made. To me, the easy solve for this is to do both pieces. But I understand what Karen is saying, Houseperson Karen is saying also, is there something different we can do with the funds? But I think because they're unearmarked right now, we do have another roundabout that needs a piece as well, why not just solve them both? Because that is giving that artist an opportunity. And it also, to me, is a learned lesson of when you are submitting a bid for a government project, it can't be, yes, I can do it for the amount if it requests a budget. But this provides that opportunity for both.
So, we're going to go back to them and ask them with the extra money to put a budget together?
That would be, that would be my request, that they have an understanding.
But we can't do it with the original, is what you're saying?
Say that one more time.
But you're, we can't go back to them with the original proposals and say, do this?
Whatever the pleasure of this body is. We can do whatever the pleasure of this body is. To me, if that is what the ask is and that's what the motion that gets made, but to me, I think that based off of evaluating what was submitted, is it unfair to the person that did everything they were supposed to do to say, well, we're sorry, you did everything you were supposed to do, but we're going to give this person a second chance to provide additional information that we requested in the first place?
So, there was a process, there was a step missed in the process, and we should have asked for that ahead of time. So, now it's, now.
That step wasn't missed in the process. It may have been overlooked in the final selections.
From three other artists.
But again, I brought that to their attention. They explained to me, each artist was explicitly told that they needed to provide this. So, I.
Yeah, so I just feel like, yeah, I feel, yeah. I just, I feel like what's before us is only one artist followed the rules. So, regardless of this process that we held, we only have, we can only vote on this one sculpture. Or, and, not a or, and we've got extra money and that, and we're willing to go back to the other artist and say, lesson learned. You have to, next time you submit a proposal, submit a full proposal. So, I don't, to me, those feel almost like contradictions. I don't get how you can't just do that now. So, is there a, is there a legal ordinance reason we can't do that? City manager or attorney, Haggerty?
Can't just do, asking them to?
Ask them to submit their budgets as part of this process so that we can.
I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a legal reason, but there's like a fairness reason.
But they were all considered in fairness, and that's to me is what the, that to me is a concern. They were all proposed.
So.
They were all proposed to the community as options.
They were all proposed. The proposals themselves were not proposed. The pieces were all proposed.
I get it.
So, from an RFP standpoint, none of the RFPs were proposed on the desk of those individuals in that room. None of the RFPs were proposed.
I get that.
I think the, the financial side, the full proposal is supposed to be evaluated by the voting body.
Yeah, so I get that. And what I'm saying is, we told the community, you have four choices, and they really didn't. And that, that's what I'm uncomfortable with. So, if we put it to vote today, I'll be voting no or abstaining.
Well, I mean, the motion on the floor right now is to postpone for two weeks.
And I don't know what we're going to learn in two weeks or what's going to change in two weeks, so.
Any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor to postpone for two weeks?
I still would like that two week window. I think the committee itself needs to revisit this. I don't know how we all got to this, this point. Those two extra weeks, I don't know how much that's going to throw off the artists and meeting the deadlines and what have you. But I just feel something really got dropped, and I'm a part of the team. I'm, I'm a part of that, that group, but I don't, I, I don't know.
I, I feel like nothing really got dropped. We're doing, we did something completely new. We had a combination committee of two different groups, a very public oriented process. Everything about this is brand spanking new. And I don't think anyone should really be blamed for it. This is what happens when you do these sorts of things. It's a little bit messy, and you have to apply some lessons learned. You also have to kind of live with what you get.
But the pieces were designed for MLK Drive. I mean, wherever the second piece goes, I'm hearing the Parkside Roundabout. And Jackson is a community in hope. But that was designed for MLK Drive, all the pieces. We asked them specifically to design it for that area. And I do feel that that would be, it's, it's not horrible, but it was designed for MLK Drive.
And we haven't talked to anybody in the Parkside area about it? We haven't gone out to bid?
I was going to say, I.
See how much that's going to cost?
That, to me, was like it's Ward Six. This was designed for Ward One or MLK Drive, the piece itself. So, it's just those type of things, I think, that the committee needs to go over, review. I mean, yes, it's all learning points, but I feel that would be a help to the committee. It would be to me. I don't know about the rest, but for me, it would be. Because I don't know how we got to this place. But I do understand how we got to this place. Okay, the RFP, the, the actual laid out budget wasn't there. And it got past all of us. It looks like our, the majority of us got past me. And I don't remember anyone, when this was decided upon, I don't remember anyone telling me as part of the committee that we don't have budgets. So, I feel, you know, kind of like, I'm on the committee, I didn't realize that this was the case, but maybe I missed something somewhere. But it's like, even as far as just today, nobody ever mentioned that to me in the conversations I've had with committee, that the budget is the reason for this change. So, I don't know the reason why we went with the other two. I, I like all of the pieces. Now, I don't want anyone to get me wrong, MK's and Chris and Doug and, and Mr. Thompson. You know, I like all the pieces, but this piece, this, this point wasn't clarified, not with me as a committee, unless I missed some kind of email message somewhere. I don't know. That we had a budget reason for making this decision. So, you know, I'm, I'm going on fairness as to what the community voted on and for. And now I'm finding that we're talking budget is the reason why we went with the other. So, I don't know how I missed it, but I'm not going to say I didn't miss it. So, I mean, we can, private, I don't even remember. I think I voted to postpone. I will still support the postpone for two weeks.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote on postponing for.
Gary, push my button.
Two weeks.
Hang on, I'm not getting anything.
And the motion fails. See, another motion that wants to go on the table.
But we do have the one.
The original.
114.
The original motion.
Sir, that was the original motion made immediately after opening up item 114. There was no other motion made currently.
Oh, got it, got it.
So, I would make a motion for us to follow recommendation of approval of Doug Jones and Chris Turner, Community of Shapes Art Sculpture for the MLK Boulevard Roundabout for the city attorney and the Parks and Recs Director to move forward with the artist's agreement, including delivery and installation, not to exceed $30,000.
I support for discussion. More discussion. It's only eight forty.
We had all night.
We got to nine o'clock at least.
Okay. So, I'll open it up for discussion. For time's sake, let's just go like left to right. We'll do two rounds of discussion, since Freddie just put us on a 20 minute time limit. Councilmember Gunn.
So, I, I, I hear Councilmember Robinson's concerns with process, and I hear too that these pieces were really created with a piece that was written specifically in the spirit of the MLK corridor. And that this is a new process and that it got a little mushy or unclear. And I, I, you know, we're building community, we're trying to work with community, we're trying to, you know, build faith in us as leaders. So, I feel like there's no reason why we can't go back to those artists and ask them to submit a budget for those proposals. And I have no other comments. No, I don't. I'm just, those are my concerns, yeah.
Yes, I guess, you know, I think all these artists, they have, they work with government before. They understand procedure when you're dealing with government. They understand the proposals, the numbers, the government figures I'm working with. And I, I think with that, I, I don't, I guess I have a hard time with that because the budget's in there, the amount, we're not going to go across what's up, what's up there. But also, I just don't see, I don't know, I know we sold a locomotive and things like that, and now we're talking about putting another one in Parkside. We had community input from the first ward and everything about voting on this, and you had opportunity to vote on it. And now we're talking about putting a structure in Parkside when no one had that roundabout, no one even, do they want structure over there? Six more. Do they want structure over there? We don't know if they want that color, if they want that or not. So, now, you know, I just have. Six more. Do they want structure over there? We don't know if they want that color, they want that or not. So now, you know, I just have a hard time. I don't, I, I don't, I don't, I don't believe that. But, um, I guess it's the transparency that's got me caught up. The transparency of, um, why couldn't the committed group just, if the, if they, if everyone's over budget, then have a budget. Couldn't they just postpone it and just went back and say, okay, this was going on, instead of putting a vote out for four, you know, and vote on four, when actually there's only just one who submitted, who submitted a proposal, and, um, the right proposal, and, and was on the budget. I understand, you know, we deal with engineering, they put out a budget, they have an estimate on what they want, what they expected to come on, on, sometimes it's under it, sometimes it's over it. And I don't know about art, maybe they've been, they did research and found out how much the structure would cost. But, um, I'm just, um, you know, I, I don't agree with putting the second one in Parkside Roundabout, and, um, I'm, um, I'm gonna vote no, because I just think the transparency wasn't what it should have been with this, uh, because, thank you.
Just to clarify, the motion on the table, does it have to do anything with the Parkside art, or is it just for this at this moment? I know we've talked about it a little bit, but, okay.
Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I'm really torn, 'cause all the pieces are good. All the pieces are good. So, I'm not voting against the piece. I'm voting against the process. And I was a part of the process, so it, it's just very uncomfortable, and I, I guess I'm a little disappointed that this came to this point, got to the agenda, and I missed, I missed that fact, okay? So I, I'm gonna vote no, but it's not against the piece. I'm gonna vote no, because I didn't understand how we got here to this, to this point. So, and I just feel like I'm kind of in the dark now, been hit with a light, and I don't know where I, I don't, I just don't. It's just unfortunate, and I don't like this point, but, you know, I can't say it's anybody's fault but mine, I guess. That I didn't know that the budget piece wasn't already there, and I felt as if when we presented the four, three pieces, that those were the three that had met where we were. And like I said, I missed it. Just gotta vote no, 'cause I think we need a little more time to get this committee together, 'cause I'm not sure if I'm the only one that missed it, based on what I heard today. So. Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Will.
Just two things. I think, uh, I'd like to point out that Doug Jones is a local artist. And I'd also like to point out, as subjective as it is, this is by far my favorite out of the four, hands down. Love it. Um, it doesn't matter what I think. And I think, second and most importantly, just 'cause somebody typed thirty thousand dollars in a word document and turned it in, doesn't mean they're not gonna go over that, just like somebody not doing that means they're gonna, or they're gonna stay under it, and just like somebody not doing that means they're gonna go over it. To put it bluntly. So I'm gonna be voting no too.
Councilmember Karen.
I'm pretty much gonna echo what, uh, councilmembers Forgrave and Robinson have said. Ultimately, I am also gonna be voting no on this. Um, not, again, not because I don't like the piece, like, like, um, Councilmember Forgrave said, this actually is also my favorite piece of the four. And I've been wanting something to go in that roundabout since that roundabout was put in place. You can even probably ask, uh, our city manager, or our city, our city engineer, that I've been talking about putting something there since it was put there. So I think that this essentially just needs to be revisited by the committee and have something more complete, I guess, presented to us to vote on. So I will be voting no on this.
So my only comment would be, um, I think it is, it's, um, it is, it's our responsibility to be the fiscal decision-maker. That is like, that's our, our major responsibility. Also, like to look at the full scope of the IRP. Again, I will repeat, I had conversations with, um, like, not only the city manager, with Vice Mayor present, about my concerns of the other proposals not having budgets included in them. And my offer at that time was, should we go back to these artists? And ask them for this piece, because I am blindly looking at the pieces themselves. I am looking at delivery, schedule of product, and I, I, what I, what I would really think should be displayed on the screen right now is that, is that, is those additional pieces that were provided. Ultimately, this was a concern for me, because my desire, much like Vice Mayor Robinson's, is to go the direction that our public wants to go. That was my major concern. What happens when the piece that gets picked, the popular piece, isn't the one that has all the pieces in the IRP? Should we go back to them and ask them? And I was told, these artists all explicitly received the same information about the request. I'm totally fine with whatever council wants to do. And I think right now, the fear in decision-making is, are we making a decision outside of what our public wanted us to do? I think that's what the real fear in decision-making is. It's not about the piece itself, because we've all stated, we don't, we don't mind which piece we go with, right? They, they all look great. But what it feels like is we put the responsibility on the public to make the final decision, when in reality, we're responsible for making the final decision. I'm totally fine with whatever direction council chooses to go.
Okay, so I do have another comment.
Round two.
Round two. So, yeah, I'm not, for me, it's not a fear of, I get, I, you know, as a leader, I all the time say I want input, but final decision rests with me. So I'm not, that's not my fear. My concern is it doesn't feel like a fair process that we, that we gave them choices. And that what we should have just did is say, we got four proposals, this is the one that completed the, um, application thoroughly, and this is the one that the city is choosing based on available funds. And for me, that's, that's what, what I'm, that's why I'm voting no.
Could I ask for clarification? Are you saying that you would have preferred that to happen before we received public input?
Yes. Yep.
Because then, at that point, what would the point of public input be?
What, exactly. What's the point of public input now, if it's not, if we aren't looking at full proposals? We're not comparing apples to apples. We're comparing apples to oranges, but then telling them they can only have the apple. So. That's why I'm voting no.
Councilmember Dancy.
No further, no comment.
Vice Mayor.
No more comments.
Me either.
Okay. Clerk will tally and display the vote. And the motion fails. And I would follow up with a motion to purchase the piece submitted that has the popular vote by MK with a not to exceed thirty thousand dollars and recommendation to staff to request the budget be submitted before moving forward.
I support that.
So we're adding up.
Just swapping out Chris Turner and Doug Jones for next one, MK.
Okay, so it's been moved in, supported. And we will do the same thing for comment, discussion during this period. Uh, Councilmember Go.
No comment.
Councilmember Dancy.
No comment.
Councilmember Robinson.
Oh, jeez. Now I feel as if, I don't know how I feel right at the moment. And I'm sorry, but, you know, I understand that was the most popular. And I don't know if, I don't know, if I'm ready to vote for anyone at this point. I just feel there is something that the committee itself needs to sit down and figure it out. It's not really going to , I don't think, change anything. 'Cause we've already presented to the community the four pieces. So I'm gonna take, I'm, I'm just gonna take this time to think through the way, the vote.
Councilmember Will. Councilmember Karen.
I'm kind of like, uh, like Councilmember Robinson, like, I don't, I don't know how to feel about that, just because I, I, I don't know. I, I don't think I can vote on that right now.
Okay. My biggest concern from the get-go was going with the will of the people versus what was presented in the, in the projects, IRPs, submissions, um, but I feel like we back in the air again. I feel like we are like back in the air, so like, uh, if that, that would be my only comment, but I'll go back around one more time for comment, and then we can go forward from there. Councilmember Go.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to say.
Okay.
Oh, come on.
Councilmember Dancy.
No comment.
Councilmember Robinson.
I know, I'm, I guess I'm not prepared to vote for anyone today, because I just feel that there is a process that should have been followed. I, I like following what our process is, however we present it, you know, and I, I'm, I'm in the air. Just, just like you said, I'm, I'm in the air on this whole decision, this whole project at, at this time. So I, I don't know. I think I need that two-week window for myself, 'cause being a part of the committee might be a little bit different than others, but being a part of that committee, I don't understand how I got to this point, what took place and happened. And if they, if, if the most popular one did not follow the process, and the next most popular did, you know, I, I don't know. I guess I have to weigh it in my, in my mind, so I'll probably vote no on both at this point.
Councilmember Will.
A motion was made, it was supported, I have no reason to abstain, and I'll be voting yes. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Karen.
I've got nothing.
My, my only comment is I, I totally understand, uh, um, like, being like in the air, uh, because it feels like it's incomplete. I mean, ultimately, I mean, we're, we're here to so, uh, serve our public. I think even second choice by vote of public would have been a great choice. However, uh, the, the concern, at least from our first couple of rounds of comments, was that the selection was made by our public, uh, that the submission of MK is the one that came in first place from public selection, so I'll definitely be voting yes. Because again, if we wait, I don't know what, I don't know exactly what we're waiting for. I don't know what, at this point, like, I don't know, I really don't know what we're waiting for at this point. Like, we're literally saying we're going to go with what the popular vote was, um, and the recommendation of our, uh, Pu- Public Arts Commission, uh, with the, with the understanding that a budget needs to be submitted, um, and directing staff to communicate that with the artists. So I'll just do one last call for any additional comments on the, on the motion that's on the floor. I won't go roundtable, but if anybody wants to say anything else.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All right. Clerk will tally and display the vote.
Is this the new, this is this isn't the new motion, is it?
Okay, motion carries. I'm gonna go out on a limb. I know we passed Freddie's time almost. It's a, it's a, it's a small limb, it's a small limb. Uh, and it's a recommendation for future, so don't worry. Uh, I would, um, I would ask staff for, and I don't know if we wanna do this by motion, I'll save us by motion if I just get ahead, not, that we, um, for our next meeting, to please bring back a, um, proposal to accept the bid from Doug Jones, using the money from the locomotive, uh, funds that we just received, not to be placed at the Roundabout at Parkside, because I agree, we can't put some art somewhere and not solicit the opinion of that commit, uh, community, but to be placed at the intersection of the MLK Trail and MLK Street.
Hundred percent. It's done.
Okay. So then we can, we won't have to, we don't have to debate that tonight, it'll just be on the agenda in two weeks.
Then we can debate it.
And, uh, then we can debate. So be ready, Fred.
And so that's the second one.
Yes, that's the one that's on the agenda now. Okay. Councilmember's comments, unless y'all are all commented out. Uh, let's go from right to left this time. Councilmember Karen, for now.
Thanks. I don't really have much. Um, one is actually a question for possibly, um, our city clerk, or even Lisa, if Lisa's still around. When we're doing the voting, this is completely separate, but when we're doing the voting, you have yay, and then we have now, instead of no or nay, which is kind of odd. So I don't know if that's just something that might need to be tweaked in the actual system.
This says nay.
Mine says nay.
Mine said now, it's weird.
We wanted you to vote now. We wanted you to vote no.
Anyway, that was just a random thing. Other than that, I think I'm all good.
Councilmember Forgrave.
I, I would like to take a moment to address some of the comments made tonight about some other comments made by some of our board and commission members. I think ultimately, context matters. Are white women stupid? What white women are we talking about? Is blackness evil? Who's saying it? Right? And in what context? Is it a law enforcement officer with jurisdiction over an entire county who has the legal authority to shoot and kill people? Or is it somebody else? You know, I, I don't know where to draw the line on a lot of these things, but I do know that context and nuance are extremely important, and they are the first things to go, whenever we start talking about stuff like this. And it's not a high note to end on, but I'm so friggin tired of it. Like, I'm so tired of it, and that's all I have to say.
Vice Mayor.
I, I don't have any more comments.
East side.
No comments.
Councilmember Gunn.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I said everything. I just appreciate our talking through this stuff and, you know, listening to each other and trying to be, you know, fair and equitable in our processes. So that's all I have to say.
Right. So the, the first thing that I will start with is, I have my notes. Man, so chief, public apology for the misunderstanding of the private matter that I asked you about. So for me, I think that it's important to acknowledge when there's great relationships between individuals. And one thing that I can say proudly is that I have a great relationship with the chief, to the point where I feel like I can come to him and ask him about anything at all. And that's what I did. And he said, Mayor, I'll bet you a whole my salary, that's not correct. And he was correct. And he called me the next morning and explained to me that it's not correct. So in my, and he knows I'm not apologizing on my behalf, but I am submitting a, a form of public apology, because I think it's appropriate, and I think when it's necessary, you should be willing to do so. So I extend my apologies. And thank you for your diligence and your confidence in the guys that serve our community, because that alone spoke volumes to me, that you knew without even looking that you were confident enough to bet a whole my salary. As you see, I did not accept the bet, because they don't pay me that much, and I probably would have owed you a balance if I lost. Second thing I would say is to council, I think that we'll sit at best publicly at our last meeting, that, like, when we go into these deep discussions like this, this is what it looks like when decisions are made before, before we get here. Like, and I love that about this council, I love the fact that we can have these discussions. I do think that the arts community in general owes a great debt to the place that it's at, to the artist that was being considered, who is from Jackson, who has sat at the, the inception of our Arts Commission itself, who has given so much to not really get anything back, which is why I think that we should do a consideration of the purchase of a second piece. But we can debate that in our next meeting, of course. I'm happy for the piece that did win, because like I've stated from the get-go, to me, it's been about how can we make sure that the public opinion matches up with what's fiscally most responsible? And as long as that comes back the same, with little or minor changes to what was proposed, then I'm happy with the decision that we made here. Happy to bring back some great ideas to our community from the conference that I was able to attend just recently, and just excited about continuing to serve. That would be my only comments. Mr. City Manager.
You stole my thunder.
I'm sorry.
But I, it's important for people of Jackson, everyone who's watching these meetings, to know, this council can't be, can't be accused of having everything decided and just rubber stamping what's in front of them. And I think that, I hear that a lot from people, I've heard that a lot from serving the community in Jackson since, well, for a long time now. I don't wanna say how long, but a long time now. And I think it's important, they might make a meeting go longer than we think, but the decision usually always fits with the will of the people when we're able to talk things out. And that's a good thing, no matter what.
I'll add just one more comment, because of some of mine, I'm sorry, just one last comment. Will, your anger is rightfully placed. What I will say is this, what's the quickest way to put a fire out? You starve it of oxygen. No sense breathing breath on something that you want to die. That's why I feel like some things don't even warrant a comment or discussion by us in general. At this time, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just have to say this, Mr. Mayor. This is a lucky day for someone in this own, setting up here. We just need to wish someone happy birthday. We need to sing happy birthday. To the, uh, see the turn.
All right, I know.
The big two sacks, thanks for reminding me. Yeah, the big two, see the turn, remember? So everybody, one, and a two, and a three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Thanks for spending your.
Thank you. We're extending the meeting for an extra 45 seconds, appreciate that.
That's how you know it means a lot. All right, at this time, we will entertain and adjourn.
So move.
Been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.